Would Sandra's iPad, please tell me your first and last name?
Yeah, this is Nick Yarmach.
Thank you. And would Micah, M I C H A, mind telling me first and last name for the minutes?
Hello?
Do you mind stating your first and then last name for the minutes?
Hi, I'm Mike Stotts of Butter.
Thank you. And someone signed in under M A Y E M E R Y, can they please state their first and last name for the minutes?
May Emery.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Deacon.
No, I'm not Deacon, I'm Chuck Demire.
I've just been writing to Deacon, I'm sorry.
How are you? Nice to see you.
Sorry, Chuck.
No problem, Tessa, no problem. Hi Herb, how you doing? Hi, uh, is that the Humphrey, Humphreys family? Hello, how are you? Hi Megan and Stephen, how are you? Okay, we're waiting for, we have Herb, we're waiting for, I see Sandra's iPad, where was that, was Sandra?
It's Nick Yarmach.
Sorry.
We're still waiting for Jeff.
Yeah, and we're waiting, Andy too.
Yeah. It seems like I can, do you want to rename yourself, or it seems like?
Can you name, can you name me?
Yeah.
If you can name, put my name there, you can do it. I haven't figured out how to do it.
Yeah, it says I can.
No one ever knows who I am.
No.
I even, I even appear in court this way, because all the court is this way. But of course, all the lawyers and judges know me. Oh, that's what you did, okay. You know what you could do, though? Do me a favor, Tessa, when we, I don't know if it'll affect in my next meeting, we'll have another one tomorrow night. Take away the titled chair.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah, I mean, just so they have, then they have my real name, at least everybody knows who I am, that, the other name, at least. Which would be great.
Would Joseph's iPad mind staying there, first and last name for the minutes?
I think they have their, Tessa, I think the person you were speaking to has their mute on.
Yeah, but they still should be able to hear.
Okay.
I can hear everybody, I'm just sitting in, that's all.
Who's this?
This is Joey, Joe Salvador.
Thank you.
All right, you guys have a good night, I'm gonna be sitting, listening in.
Hi, this is Stephen.
Hi, Stephen, what is your last, are you in a butter?
Yeah, my last name is Swoboda, hi Chuck, how you doing?
Stephen, of course, hi Stephen. How are you? It's been a while.
Oh, yeah.
It's been a while.
Been a while. Oh, there's Tony and Glenn, hi Tony and Glenn.
Yes, nice to see you.
Where are you guys?
Arizona.
Yeah, okay, hi.
And where are you, Stephen? Stephen, where are you?
Deerfield, Deerfield, Mass.
Very good. Didn't recognize you, Stephen.
Yeah.
30 or 40 years?
Yeah, oh well. Yeah, I've had this house in Shootsberry since the mid 70s, so.
Wow. Well, um. I have 702. I, we do have quorum, you know, I'll go to 705 to wait for Jeff. Jeff, are you here, anywhere? Andy, 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 you need to put your sound on, okay, good.
Hello, I'm here, sorry, just having a late dinner with the kids, so.
Okay. And then there's a Sandra.
That's Yarmach.
Now I get 703.
Oh, Susan's on.
Oh, yeah.
This is a nice screen.
Yeah.
Look at all.
Well, hi Jeff.
Howdy.
Okay, um. We have, we have a full quorum here. I have 704, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I would like, uh, to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, which was October 14th, 2020. Do I have such a motion?
Yes.
We moved.
Am I allowed to?
I don't know.
Is anybody moved?
Yes. Can we approve?
No, no, no. No, we need, we, there's only, besides myself, there's three other people that can make a motion.
That's what I thought.
That's the members of the zoning board. Do I have a motion, or maybe I just didn't hear?
I'll make a motion to approve, but I like.
Jeff makes a motion to approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2020, virtual zoning board meeting. Any seconds?
I second.
Okay, Herb, you'll more seconds of that, all in favor?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, stop, stop, stop.
Go ahead.
If, if Andy Berg is here, Herb can't participate.
Right.
Okay.
All right, Andy, you want to make a?
I will, um, can I just have one more second, there was just one piece that I, I just, I thought I had set, and I just want to double check, do you mind if I just wait one more second here?
Okay.
Okay, a motion to, a second to motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Discussion, discussion, hold on, discussion.
Oh geez.
Discussion, go ahead.
Okay.
Minutes?
Yeah, yeah, we got to do a discussion before, you know, motion, second, discussion.
Okay, go ahead, what's your?
Okay, so there's, there's one thing here. It is on the second page.
Okay.
And it's about midway down, it's, um. It says something about Lacy says 28 feet is maximum for Lake Wyola district, and most properties have full-size lots. Most, so the last part is, was either misinterpreted, or I, or I just didn't say it, because most properties don't have full-size lots. So.
Where is that, Jeff, I'm trying to find it.
It's, um.
It was probably a misinterpretation, I could strike that sentence from the minutes.
You could leave, you could leave everything up until district, put a period behind district, and just strike, and most properties have full-size lots.
I'm trying to find, is the second page you're saying, Jeff?
Yep, it's kind of, kind of upper-middle, upper-middle class.
Fourth paragraph.
Yeah, start.
Fourth paragraph, okay.
Starts with the name of the applicant. McCullough, sorry, McCullough, yeah.
Okay, so just go, so how about Jeff, are you okay with the 28 foot is a maximum in the Lake Wyola district? Period, is that all right? Period?
Right, and, and, you know, it's been a while, but I, I think I made some reference to, to 28 feet is what you get in the Lake Wyola district by right. If you have a full-size lot, or if you have, if you have a lot that has all the frontage and all the area, that's what you get, I was trying to clarify.
Okay, so how about Lacy says the 28 foot, uh, 28 feet is a maximum in the Lake Wyola district? And you may have.
Right.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Provided, uh, provided, um, properties have, um, full-size lots with, um, adequate frontage.
Well, i- if, if.
Yeah, right, you're guaranteed 28 feet, if that's.
As a matter, as a, as a matter of right.
Right.
If it's a full-size lot.
Yeah.
Okay? As a matter of right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what does frontage, what, how, what is the wording regarding the frontage?
I, I may not have said anything about frontage, it's.
This is full-size lot, if he has, if it's a full-size lot, you get, you get, uh, as a matter of right, in other words, you do not need a special permit, of course, this is a special permit hearing. Okay, is that all right, Tessa, you have that?
Yes, I have that, I'll make that correct again.
Right, so what is it, what, how does it read now?
Let me pull it up one second. Um, so it would be, uh, Lacy says that 28 feet is a maximum in the Lake Wyola district. If the property, provided the property has full si- is a full-size lot.
Correct.
No, no, you have to say as a matter of right, that's not.
Okay.
I'm going to object to that, because that's not what you said, and I'm going to object to that. You know, I, I think what you said very clearly is if you have a full-size lot, as a matter of right.
Okay.
You get, you, you can have, uh, do what you want, you don't need a special permit, we're aboard the current special permits. We don't give things as a matter of right, that's what a building inspector does.
Yeah, yeah, Chair is correct, we wouldn't have to be going through a special permit if the lot was full-size.
Okay, so the rewording would be, if a lot, if you have a full-size lot, 28 maximum is a matter of right.
Correct.
Yeah, that's funny.
As a matter of right, without, you can add, without, I don't, if you want to make it clearly clear, in parentheses, without the need of a special permit, just to make it real clear.
Okay. Okay.
Because that's what this is, otherwise he wouldn't be, they wouldn't be here. Okay, is that, is that the only amendment, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, it's approved unanimously. Okay, second item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for the special permit, or a variance relative to the application of Stephen and Megan M. For reconstruction of a house at 32 Lake Drive, I think we left off, we, just to refresh our recollection. We all reviewed a whole bunch of photographs, I think, uh. Is it 12 photographs altogether, three? I think it's 12 photographs, right? Is that correct? We all reviewed 12 photographs. I'm gonna count mine here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. 12 photographs into evidence, also into evidence, uh, is the special permit that was granted on another house for height increase by unanimous vote. That case. I don't remember the name of that case, can you remind me the name of that case, Tessa?
I believe it was 67 Lake, let me open it up. I'm pulling it up, 67 Shore Drive.
Okay, so that, that's in evidence two now.
It was 2016, if that was.
Okay, 2016, by unanimous vote, the same, very similar issues to this case. And there are a whole bunch of letters that I read, that's all into evidence. From the last meeting, which also included Evan Jones's, um. Photo, which is the last photo, we all have that, of the lakefront. Showing, um, all the houses in the, in the area there. And one, two, three, four, five of them, second stories, uh, the front in the lake. Jeff, I think you were supposed to give more, give us more evidence, you're gonna have some conversations with, um. Attorney Bob Ritchie and another consultant, did that happen?
Yeah, I didn't take him down there, I felt that might have been a little strange, but what I did review with, with, with Bob Ritchie in particular were the, um, the, the the bit in 486, the zoning act, about, about findings in cases like this, and these are findings, the way we have structured our findings is through a special permit.
Correct.
But in order to, to make these findings in favor, you know, when there's a proposal like this. There has to be a finding of, of, of no, no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And what I clarified with Attorney Ritchie was that, um, that every neighborhood is different. And all around the lake, the settings are different, the neighborhoods are, are, you know, pretty much defined by a, you know, small number of houses in a setting. Houses that interface and interact and can be seen from one another, influence one another, and they're going to be different around the lake. So when you make findings in one neighborhood of Lake Wyola, and they say, uh, grant something, something, a similar proposal, but in another neighborhood. Like 67 Shore Drive was granted. That does not necessarily mean that you would go over to the other side of the lake in a different neighborhood. Different set of circumstances, houses spaced differently, a butter's impact to differently, and make the same finding. And Bob confirmed that, yes, it was a, you know, each case is judged on its own merits, and based on its own neighborhood. And what those detriments might be or not be. So that's, that's what I clarified with them.
Can I butt in for just a second?
Who's, who's this?
David Holmes.
Oh, where are you, David, I don't see you.
Um, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, David, speak.
I just want to point, I just want to point out that we have two more abutters here tonight. From across the street, who, who might want to have something to say, who hadn't made it to any of the other meetings.
Okay, that's fine, because the evidence is still open, so that's fine. Who are, does anybody want, any other abutter who has not been heard from yet, want to speak now? Any abutters from across the street, there's two other abutters I hear, that are here, that may want to offer some evidence?
Yes.
Who's that?
This is Stephen.
Hi Stephen, Stephen Savoda, right?
Yes, yes. Well, I'm, I'm just a couple houses down from Dave, and it really does change, uh, the, our view of, of the lake. We're, we're across the street, and we're, we're up just a little bit, and it, and, you know, it is a, a concern, because it, um. It's, it's not the same in other neighborhoods where we, we've, you know, I've had that nice view, my tenant is, has called me, she's unhappy about, uh, what's happening. And I understand, it's, it's, uh, it just changes, it, it, in some ways, it, it is already a second story. It, uh, there's an attic in there with a window out the front, and, but I guess it's not a full second story. And, uh, but cha- changes does change the feel from our side of the road, it just totally changes things. So, uh, you know, if, um, I, it, it's, it's not, it's not the same as if it's, uh, everyone's on the same level, and it's just another, you know, it, it changes your view of the sky. This actually blocks our view of the lake, and the, and the birds, and the boats, and what's going on across the water, so, uh. I just want people to understand that it has a major impact on the people on my side of, of the street.
Steve, were you aware that, um, as part of this proposal, there's a, there's a very large tree, uh, that is right beside this house, it's coming down, are you aware of that? It will actually give you a much greater view of the sky.
Wow, and I have a problem with taking trees down, I mean, they, they, uh, they're part of the watershed, we need to get more trees in the environment. In the next 10 years, we're having to deal with, uh, a lot of environmental stuff, so I'm, you know. Yeah, it cha- it, it, yeah, I can maybe see more, but the tree's been there, and it's, uh, it's the, I don't know, it's not the same.
We think the tree is very dangerous to our house.
Well, you know, yeah, and I can see that you have to take it down, because, and I'm, 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 you know, if, if they get to be dangerous, I mean, we, that's important. But it's, it's still.
Danger.
Yeah, that's important to take care of, but other than that, I like trees.
While we have you here, are you directly across from the, uh, the whole, the beach area that you have an easement to?
Yes, well, no, uh, I'm not, let me get power here, I'm not, uh.
He's across from our house.
Are we still there? Okay, am I back? I was losing power.
Go ahead, Steve.
I, I.
I hear you, we hear you, I hear you.
Okay. Yeah, uh, I'm, they, they changed it, I'm actually, uh, I'm on the corner.
You're on the corner, are you, are you?
I'm actually directly across from Tony and Glenn.
Tony and Glenn.
Next door to Steve and Megan.
You're, you're, you're across the street, but next door to a house where Stephen Megan is. How close are you to this beach that you all have easements to? Stephen, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still there. I'm, I'm just having trouble hearing. It's, uh, it's just, uh, the next house over. There's one, there's one more, there was one more house, and yeah, it, it actually, yeah, it's, it's just a walk across the street.
Can you see the, from your house, can you see that beach area?
I, I can see the property. I look, the, the house is in the way of actually seeing the beach itself.
Okay, okay. And you, and I understand you have, all have a right to go on to that beach and have a full view of the lake. Is that correct?
Yes, it, we have for recreational purposes. Someone actually owns and pays taxes on that and yeah, we can't leave boats on it unless we make an arrangement with them, but that we can use it for swimming.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Please, who's that?
So I'm Rob Smith with my wife Ellen Shaw Smith. We, we live at twenty-five Lake Drive.
Go ahead.
So that, that property is owned by two other private, private owners that beachfront property. It's not deeded. There's no, there's no official, it's an unofficial that they allow people who live here to use that, that beachfront.
It's on their deed that everyone is allowed access per the Great Pines flat that was recorded in like nineteen thirty-six.
But part of what, why I wanted to speak was that we're, we're twenty, twenty-five Lake Drive, so we're three houses down from the proposal. And it doesn't direct, it's not directly across from us, so it's not directly impacting our view. It does a little bit, but not directly. We have a, a house that's directly across the street that there's a proposal to also expand and go up, but it's not before this committee because it's not outside of the parameters of height and width, but certainly has a significant impact on our enjoyment of the view of the lake when we looks directly across out of our house. The house across the street is one late, one level, but if it goes up two levels, it's actually gonna be right in front of our view, both of our upstairs and downstairs views of the lake. And we absolutely want people to have an opportunity to enjoy their property and have their every right to have, you know, make, make improvements to that, to what they want to do. And so certainly for Megan and is it Andrew? I'm sorry, you're the first name of the other person?
Stephen.
It's Steve.
Yeah, certainly want them to have enjoyment of their property. It's just that we want to acknowledge to the zoning board how these changes, just as Jeff Lacy was alluding to, have different impacts based on where we are. Because if we had a higher height, it wouldn't make that much of a difference, but every, every improvement and enlargement kind of encroaches on the view. So on either side of us across the lake, there's two-story houses that are taking up the majority of the property. And as you know, the lots are relatively small, so if they cover the property, it's, again, decreasing the view, decreasing the view, decreasing the view, and the difference between being in the woods and being in the lake is substantial, especially for us, because we purposely chose to be living by a lake at a house that has a view of the lake. And now that, as we would have, wouldn't have known about it because, but we were, we were notified because of the conservation about the house across the street at twenty-six Lake Drive. So for, for Stephen and Megan's proposal, it's not directly impacting us, but certainly it has a potential impact. And we really want to find something that's equitable so that people can enjoy their house, but just to acknowledge to the board that it is having an impact and to take into account that impact and how that is as you interpreted what's been, you know, brought forward with the zoning commission current guidelines and, you know, the proposals for making changes.
Okay, anybody else, the, any other abutters that have not been heard from that want to speak on this? Anybody? Okay, how about, now that we've received some new evidence from abutters, any other prior abutters who have spoken? Does any of you want to speak to any points here? Okay, so no about, no, no one wants to speak about this at all. I'm not talking about members, I'm talking about the abutters. Okay, I'm hearing no one else wants to participate. Okay, so we're gonna.
I, I just would like to up for a second, to, to Megan or Steve want to have anything they would like to say? I just wanted to make sure they had that opportunity as well.
That was my next.
Oh, sorry, 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 Chuck.
It's all right. Hey, I want you to be practicing, Andy. That's good. So Stephen, Megan.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we've, we've gone through this and for the folks that haven't been involved early on, I mean, we recognize that there is an impact to improving this cottage, but for a number of reasons. I mean, the infrastructure is being improved dramatically than that which exists currently. And the trees were rotted and a hazard. So we certainly will be addressing a lot of the defoliation with all the necessary steps we have to take to, for the Conservation Commission. So we are doing everything in our power to restore anything that will be, will has been removed or will be removed. And that's all documented within the other permits that have been received. We did an extensive amount of research for existing conditions around the, the lake. I mean, bear in mind, this lake is a hundred and thirty acres.
Yeah, one.
I mean, a hundred and twenty-five acres. This is not a large land area. I, I disagree with the position of having different neighborhoods. It's very, I, I mean, it's not populated enough to deem that Susan Nilo, who lives forty feet from our house, is deemed to be a separate neighborhood. I, I mean, and she's had this, the same improvements and very similar that we're proposing. There have been numerous situations around the lake that have gone through this process and have done some kind of back and forth with neighbors. So we decided to just take the lowest common denominator of a recent project that has gone through this exercise and didn't add requests to go all the way up to the twenty-eight feet. So we feel we've done our best and tried to research what's happened around the lake and to minimize impact. The house will be substantially similar to, to the current construction and will be kept in the field. It, it won't be a McMansion as folks have alluded to. I mean, it's a very modest structure. And it will retain that modest feel. So I don't really know what else to, I'm happy to entertain individual questions, but we've really gone through the exercise to try to propose something that will fit with the neighborhood and that there is precedent that have, had, it's been approved and you know, constructed in a, in a harmonizing, and now is in a harmonizing manner with the neighborhood. So I mean, I, I, folks are fundamentally opposed to development, and I think that's a planning board discussion and not the zoning board. I mean, it's my understanding the zoning board has to determine if this is substantially more detrimental, and I just can't understand how someone forty feet away had this exact situation approved, and that's gonna be either a separate neighborhood or deemed to be, you know, a different situation. I just, I, I have a tough time with that. And we've already addressed the view impact by not requesting to go all the way up to twenty-eight feet.
Okay, any other abutters want to?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know.
Who, who, who are you? Robert Smith?
Ellen Shaw Smith. Could I just ask a question? What are the different options for height when someone's building up, or is, are there different?
The town, the generally, our zoning bylaws, the maximum you can build up all over the town except for the lake is thirty-five feet. The lake has been reduced to twenty-eight feet.
Excuse me, excuse me, Chuck.
Yeah.
Are we not talking about the, the limitations for a non-conforming lot?
No.
What do you mean?
Everything is twenty-eight feet.
The question posed to me was what, what are the height restrictions?
Yeah, but there. Yeah, it's my understanding, sorry, this is David Holmes.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
It's my understanding that on a non-conforming lot, that, that you're limited to when you're replacing a structure to the footprint and the height of the existing structure. Isn't that right?
That is without a special permit.
That's what, that's without a special permit. That if you want.
Exactly, that's, that's why we're here, that.
If you want to build as a matter of right, as a matter of right, that's exactly what the law is. But if you want to build within the bylaws, you need a special permit. And, and, and the special, and the maximum we could give, for example, if someone wanted to build twenty-nine feet, we could not grant that under a special permit because the bylaws don't allow us to grant that. The maximum we can grant under a special permit in the lake area and the lake district is twenty-eight feet. The rest of the town is thirty-five feet. This is twenty-eight feet. The proposal, if I, if I'm.
I, I understand that, Chuck. I was just saying what you can build without a special permit.
Yeah, but this is a special permit hearing. That's what this is.
I know that.
Okay, so, so the law, the, the regulations allow this board in this district to approve a, a structure up to twenty-eight feet. This is, this, we have the authority to do that under these bylaws. I want to make that perfectly clear. And insofar as we meet the criteria, six-point-one dash three, we can do that. There are more stringent criterias in these bylaws. That's nine-point-two dash two, which can be found on page sixty-three of the bylaws. These are far more stringent. These are, which we can, which I believe are all met. In my position is they're all met. So, you know, whether we apply the relaxed one in six-point-one dash three C or the review criteria, which we do not need to apply, but we could apply, which are more stringent, nine-point-two dash two, A through L, it's my position very clearly that, 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 that this is something we should approve, because I don't believe that the expansion is, is, is so substantially more detrimental than not. I, otherwise, we might as well have a bylaw that just says, anybody, any neighbor who has any view, no matter how minimum the, the obstruction of the view is, can has the right to veto it. The bylaw might, might as well say that, and it doesn't say that. The bylaw gives us very specific criteria, provided that the board finds that such reconstruction, extension, structural change, major exterior alteration or expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conform obstruction or use. I don't believe we could in good conscience find that it is. And again, as I said earlier, if we apply the more stringent criteria of nine-point-two dash two, I believe every one of them are also met. So I mean, just, and that's my position.
Mr. Chairman, I have to interrupt you. It sounds like you're in the deliberation phase of this. This is the public hearing.
Well, I, well, okay, but we have already had discussions as you had.
End the public hearing and let's start, let's start going at it.
If there's more evidence, let's bring it in. If otherwise, we, I think we should move into deliberations.
So the public hearing ends when everyone here has exhausted what they have to say.
Does anybody else want to say something?
And no more.
Jeff, Jeff, let me speak. Does anyone else want to offer evidence?
This is Rob Smith again. Megan and Stephen, this is the first time we've come to the meeting. I really applaud you. I, I hear you, Megan, saying that you really want to be conscientious and respectful for the neighborhood and for the lake as well, that you've done due diligence and research about what other things have happened around the lake. And we really, again, I really want you to have enjoyment of your property, and I understand it was a pretty small, I don't know the details, but I know it was a pretty small cabin that you're in and having some improvement, have some space that brings some meaningful enjoyments, and it's really important. So I, again, really appreciate you not going all the way to the maximum that you really took into account the rest of the neighborhood, and I think that's laudable. So thank you very much.
Is anybody else?
Thank you.
Any other abutters, just before I can.
I like.
Speeches here. Who's that?
This is Steve, Stephen. Just to finish up, I, I, I respect, and I'm, I want them to enjoy their property. I'm glad they do. And they're, they're, to some degree, the bigger concerns are the, the health and safety, you know, the trees, but, you know, I, I'm really concerned about septic and other things too, because we, in the, we have a, have had a history of, of problems with systems being overrun. And so, you know, it, it is an annoyance, the, the view, but they have a I, I, I definitely want them to enjoy it, but I really want to keep this lake safe and enjoyable for, for the whole community. And the communities are different, different sides of the lake. I can see someone saying that that hasn't been, hasn't lived there and doesn't know, but there, it is, it, there are different neighborhoods around the lake. You may think of it as extremely small, but it's, it's very different on, in different places, so I'm, I'm glad we have a chance to have our neighbors heard. And they should hear that it does affect our, our, our view of, of the lake, and that is an important, and I'm glad they are not going the full twenty-eight feet. And, and, you know, I, I hope everything else is worked out in a way that will benefit the community. I hope, I hope it ends up a, a, a win for them and a, you know, a, a, a win for the neighbors in the town too. But, you know, I'm glad we have a chance to speak about this and, you know, it, you know, it, we want good changes. It does seem like there's more changes sometimes than there are improvements. I hope this will end up being an improvement, but the, the amount of change seems to be more than the amount of improvements.
Steve, are you, are you aware that the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission have approved the septic systems and all the help? You are aware of that.
No concerns me though, and I, I, I know, you know, we've gone from tanks to these coffin systems and, you know, I, I just hope that, that all, all these systems can handle it. Yes, I do understand and it's been approved and, you know, there, it's, and, and it's the drainage of the road. I mean, they, they, they built a wall one time to keep the water from going down across the property, and it's been a, it's been a battle in between the different houses and where the, where the rainwater comes down the hill and, and into the property and stuff, and, you know, they, they dug up next to my well to make like a pond over there because they, they wanted it on my side of the road instead of their side. You know, but the town got after them and they moved out partly because of that, I think. But, you know, there, there, there are a lot of concerns and to make these places, deal with the, the water that lands there and, and it can be handled and it doesn't just get pushed to, to the side and oh, I definitely believe in, in good, strong communities, and I want them to be happy, but I want Dave to be happy and the people on our side and I, you know, it does, it does seem like sometimes things start and they just multiply and, and I'm, I'm glad the houses have to stay below the twenty-eight feet. And I'm really happy that they're not choosing to, to maximize it, but it does, it does seem like we're putting more and more in, impact on the area and on the water and the, and dealing with the water getting to there and the sewage and their, their own water supply and being on a well that's nearby. It's a, it's a tight situation, these small lots, and they, they, you know, we don't do the tight tanks anymore because I guess those are a problem. So it is kind of interesting. I don't think we have all the answers on how best to do that. And I, I don't have the answers. I just wanna, I, I want them to be happy, but I want all the neighbors to be happy too. And it, it, it does change the way it looks from our side. So take, take that for what it's worth, and thanks very much for all your, uh, uh, work, work on this, the committee members and stuff, and I'm, I'm glad to see that the neighbors are voicing their opinion and also are caring about our new neighbors here and that they'll enjoy their, their place, because it is definitely, we're lucky to be in such a good place. Thank you very much.
All right, Stephen. Any, any other abutters want to, want to speak? Yes, go ahead. This, this is the Smith family?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I don't mean, I, I know there's important business to be done in regard to this house that's being discussed. There's gonna be a house built across from us next year, and my understanding is because they're within a twenty-eight-foot range, there's not going to be a hearing. But, but our view is going to be decreased, I would say, between fifty to sixty percent, maybe more. Like, this is very, very significant for us. I don't want to get in the middle of this. Like this is very, very significant for us. I don't want to get in the middle of this hearing or slow it down. I just want to understand if we have any opportunity to speak to what is going to sign. I mean, eh, to say that this is going to change uh the quality of our life and our view is is an understatement. So where, where do we have an opportunity to speak to that?
And I, I, you're saying this project is not impacted, but you're afraid the next one will? Is that what you're saying?
Right across the street, directly across from us, we're on a slight grade. And the house is is going to come up and block both of our views. So we're, I would say that we'll lose fifty to sixty to seventy percent of our view because it's right in front of our house.
I'm just trying to understand, this project or the next project?
But I think I'm being told that there, yes, but I think I'd be told that there may not be a hearing for that. And I just want to know who I speak to.
Well, I I I don't know why there wouldn't be a hearing, but.
Okay, so there always is if there's a project.
If they're gonna seek a special permit, then.
They're not speaking as, seeking a special permit.
They're not seeking a special permit?
As far as we know.
So there's a one-story house there and they're going to build up. And then they're also, because they can't widen it on the bottom, they're going to build two stories. But then they're going to, the second story is actually going to be wider. And so they're going up to like twenty eight feet is their plan, but do they have to have a hearing to do that?
They're within setbacks. They're within the setbacks for the side and the front. So if you go to section six, as by right, you can go, as long as you're within the setbacks and you're not encroaching on the setbacks, you can go up to the max height.
Without, without a special permit?
I believe so, but I, I'm not the authority on that. That was just my interpretation.
I don't know, but it's a non-conforming law.
I don't mean to get in the middle of this hearing. I want you to be able to do your business. I just want to know who I, who I'm able to speak to about how this will impact us.
I mean, you can come before us. We do have education guidance, but I have to see what that project's all about. And I, I'm, I'm just speculating what it is and I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's a conforming law or not. I don't know what, how much.
I believe it's a non-conforming lot and they'll be coming for a special permit as well.
Okay, well, thank you.
Then you're gonna get noticed and you're gonna be heard if that's true, but I don't know that it is or isn't, because I don't know about that law.
May I contact someone outside of this meeting just to have a follow-up conversation?
Also, you can also come before us or 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 at another education guidance meeting. Or you can go to the planning board. Jeff Lacy, uh, who's a member of this board, is also a member of the planning board. They can discuss it with you too at one of their meetings.
Okay.
You can call me if you want, but I'm gonna ask you if you call me to give me a lot more information because I'm, I'm just, don't know what it is. I don't need a plan and any what it is.
Right, right.
I want to, or you can call Jeff Lacy, you can call the planning board.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that we took up.
I don't want to, that's the problem I'm having with this whole matter. It's what's gonna happen in the future. I don't think it's relevant, not to this meeting. I think it's relevant to a planning board meeting for sure in in terms of uh proposing legislation, but I don't think the zoning board should be legislating. I think we should be applying the bylaws as we have them in the case we have before us. We can make findings or not depending upon how we interpret these various provisions. And there are right now three voting members that are gonna have to determine that. Obviously, we have another alternate number two, and I want to hear from him too. But right now, is there anybody else that wants to speak on this project? Not on future projects that may or may not happen in the future. Is anybody here? Okay, having said none, now I wanna, Jeff, I would like to. Who's that?
It's uh me, Emery. I just wanted to know where they were planning to park.
Okay, who is, I I don't, okay, who are you?
Um, I live in Stevens. I'm the renter at.
You're the renter, okay.
And I'm just curious as to where um they will park their cars.
Okay, uh, Steve and Megan, can you answer that question?
Yeah, sure. So currently we have one parking spot. We're expanding that to be able to either do two or three cars on the ten-foot um, on the ten-foot strip on either side of the property. We, there's gonna be uh nothing under there. We should be able to park there or we should, we can park in the front of the house.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other abudders or or um interested parties that want to speak on this matter besides board members?
I, I, I'm interested. So you're saying you're not gonna park between the house and the road anymore? Uh, it's gonna be on either side, so that, is the house moving back?
No, so we're gonna um.
There's two tandem spots in the front.
There's gonna be, we can, there's, we're gonna have the forty-foot frontage, ten-foot wide there that we will be able to park there, or we have, we're gonna have also, the leach field is gonna be centered, so twenty feet wide. So that leaves ten feet on either side of the leach field to the property lines, so we should, we can pull in there as well.
And that's where, and that's where any water coming down the road or down your driveway would also go, right?
Well, we're having an infiltration trench that was um designed by our engineer and um approved by Conservation Commission to address runoff. We took a, did a great deal of work to make sure that we uh improved that part of the lake.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, this is Karen, next door neighbor. Um, Stephen, could you just clarify the parking again? Um, is it going to be on the same level? Is our parking parallel to us, so to speak?
Oh yeah, correct, on the same level.
Okay, thanks guys.
Yep.
Any other abudders want to speak on the matter? Any interested parties want to speak on the matter, offer any more evidence? Because I'm, we're about to consider closing the evidence. Okay, I'm he- I'm hearing no one wants to speak on and offer any more evidence. Um, is it time for the board to consider closing the evidence and just go into deliberation? Does anybody want to speak on that?
I I I believe it is.
Okay, all right. Jeff, you agree?
Yeah.
Um, are you, are you okay with that, Herb?
Yep.
Okay, so we're unanimous on that. Okay, so let me hear from all of you first. Again, we're, we're, we're focusing on six point one dash three, extension or alteration, section C. We're focusing on uh, uh, our authority to grant a special permit for this project, and we're only allowed to do that under six point one dash three, section C, if we find that this reconstruction, that this extension, that this structural change, that this alteration or expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure or use. That, and that we, and that's the, where we have the authority to apply that criteria. Or if we want to, we can look at the more stringent criteria, nine point two dash two, which appears on page sixty-three, A through L, we can apply. We can look at that for guidance if we want, or even apply it if we want. But the 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 legal uh requirement for us is certainly a six point one dash three C, okay? Um, so that's what I'd like my members to speak on, and offer your opinions in in our deliberations. Anybody want to go first?
Um, so I guess I'll make a couple of just remarks. Um, I mean, I think the thing that you said, Chuck, that's really important, is this is not about what may happen in the future. That is a legislative activity. This is about the current project with the plans as laid before us. And sort of the, 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 what we have to use for that is whether it's substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. And I mean, I think there is no, um, I I can't see any just world where this would be considered more substantially detrimental than currently exists. I mean, they're, they're talking about improved drainage, um, a new septic fields. They are having a fairly minimal height. Um, it's, it's going up in height just a little bit in relative terms. The, the disruption to the neighbors is minimal. Um, and, and while I agree that there can be multiple neighborhoods within a lake, I don't agree that there can be multiple neighborhoods within like forty or fifty feet in a lake. I think that really the the totality of a neighborhood is, you know, a little bit bigger than these forty-foot chunks. I mean, I don't think I, I, you could find any reasonable person who would say, you know, my house and the two houses next to it are the neighborhood. And then the next neighborhood's, you know, fifty feet over that way. And and so I think, given the other expansion that's gone on in the neighborhood, the limited um height expansion that's proposed in relative terms, the limited disruptions of views, the other improvements that they're making. Um, I I just, I I can't see any way that that this could be deemed to be more um, that that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current structure. And I think that any other interpretation is a matter of a bylaw change. It's a matter of something the planning board must do. But it's not something where we can decide at this moment to take a stand and say, look, we don't want this development around the lake. And so therefore, you know, this project is where we're gonna draw the line. That can't be how it works. There has to be something in writing that sort of gives people expectations about what they are and aren't allowed to do. Um, and, and, and I think that, you know, i- if if we want to have that be more clearly written somewhere that, look, we're gonna be capping these at a certain number of feet. Sure, the planning board can write that. That can be passed as a zoning bylaw amendment, but this is not the place to start legislating. And I think if we start legislating here, we're opening up ourselves to all sorts of real legal trouble. I mean, I I think that um, this, this to me feels like there is, um, that there is no sound justification for denying um, for, for denying this, that this permit that is not, um, you know, capricious in some way or another. I I understand the desire of some that that this, to stop lakefront development or to slow it down. But you can't just pick a project and say it stops here. You have to follow the laws as they're currently written. And we can change them down the line if that's what's desired, and maybe that's a great thing, but 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 th- this is not where that stand starts.
Okay, um, Jeff or Herb, do you wanna be heard?
Well, uh, I'm not a voting member.
But you, I I, your opinion is still important.
Uh, I think we have to keep a personal uh vision about the lake out of this discussion. My personal vision of the lake, since I moved here, has always been, there are too many houses on that lake to begin with. That's my personal view. That's my personal vision. I would have wished that Lake Wyolla had remained pristine through the thirties, forties and fifties. It didn't. The bylaws were written in such a way that allowed that to happen. And the bylaws are written now for certain things to happen, in certain ways that are written and regulated. And I couldn't agree more with Andy and Chuck on their points. So I would just hope that we can keep our personal views about the pristine nature of the lake, which I think, if I might say, has already been ruined by what's been done already in the past, out of this discussion today.
Jeff, you want to be heard?
Okay. Uh, yeah, I have a lot to say. Um, and I am gonna try to organize my thoughts. Um, first of all, I want to address sixty-seven shore drive versus twenty-three lake drive. Um, and those two cases, um, pretty much the same type of proposal to increase the height of a lakefront uh property, special permit, uh, some objections. We granted the sixty-seven shore, um, and now we're discussing the twenty-three lake. Um, after sixty-seven shore was brought up and um um, the wording that we used was um submitted into evidence. I went over there to visit that property. I'd been there before when we did the case. And I stood on the deck of the objector right across the street. Now, this project has been built, and I took pictures, took a panoramic series of pictures that I believe I circulated to all of the members, and I believe they're in evidence. Um, and and they show a much different neighborhood. And when I say neighborhood, it's not just one house or two houses. It's, you can construe it in different ways. It's, it's the immediate area. It's what you can see, what you can feel. That neighborhood is, is significantly different. And like um Bob Ritchie said, you have to evaluate it neighborhood by neighborhood. Because if you're looking for for substantially more detrimental um effects to the neighborhood, so that's the neighborhood where it's being proposed. In sixty-seven, um, the, the houses on either side of the subject property were way spaced out. Two or three or four times the setbacks that exist on twenty-three, substantial setbacks um, compared to twenty-three. Um, and the abutter, who was, who was complaining relative to some of the people on the upgrading side of um of twenty-three, had a commanding view of the lake. And could almost see over this addition, could see immediately around it and had plenty of space between the adjacent houses to see the lake. So, yes, there was some view of the lake taken away, but the lion's share of it remained. So we were able to grant that in that neighborhood, in that situation. What we have at twenty-three is different. The houses there, the three, the um, one on either side of the subject property are much, much closer, much closer setbacks, side setbacks. And the neighbors don't have as high commanding view out over these houses, um, as they do on the other side of the lake. So that's the difference between those two. Um, so I thought that was a poor example for whoever introduced it and the point that they were making, and a very good example for my point. Um, another point was brought up that we should not be legislating. Well, what we are doing is we are using the legislation that the town meeting passed. And this is our job. We make discretionary decisions. We look at things, we use our judgment. We don't have a, 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 a spreadsheet of numbers or 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 something so simple like that. There wouldn't need to be a ZBA. There wouldn't need to be a special permit if we had that, but this is discretion that we have to use. It's our job. We're not legislating. We're using our best discretion. So on the immediate project, uh, it is a one and a half, it's a one and a half-story cottage now, and the proposal is to go to three. It is already the highest of the three on either side of it. It's already higher than the two right next to it, as it exists. And the proposal is to double the size of the structure, one and a half stories to three. That's substantial. As I said, the abutting houses are very close together, side to side. So if you start building up, it's going to be a wall. It'll be the first brick, but it's going to be a wall. This is a different situation from across the lake, where we approved it, where these houses were spread out farther apart. There's also the matter of not just height, but bulk, because this project not only just goes up, it goes out, substantial dormers to the side. So it goes up and it goes out with the dormers that it doesn't already have. So there's really two changes. A height change in the peak and dormers, which essentially raise the whole thing up into almost a square. And unlike the other side of the lake, the second tier on the other side, on the westerly side of, of um, of Lake Drive um, is not as high above. They don't have as commanding views of the lake to begin with. So these height changes will, will affect them more severely than on the other side of the lake. And let's just see. So there are aspects of this project that that I would, I would opine are probably approvable. Uh, going from one and a half stories to two and a half, maybe approvable. Um, putting on a new deck, because I believe that would be within the setbacks, uh, could be approvable. Um, and rebuilding the whole place to suit the applicant, um, in in many respects. And rebuilding the whole place to suit the applicant in, in many respects would probably be no problem. So, I don't see the applicants without good options here. I just don't think a height increase is in the best interest of the neighborhood. I feel it would be detrimental. And I'm not gonna vote for it.
Jeff, you, you said three stories. I think it's going from twenty-one and a half feet to twenty-six and a half feet. It's going five feet on the peak. It's not a three-story house by any measure. Right now, it's at best, at best, it's presently a story and a half going up to something that I view as less than two stories. It's going to twenty-one and a half feet to twenty-six and a half feet.
Plans I saw showed a basement. Plans I saw show, the place does not have a basement now, so the plans I saw showed a basement.
But a basement is not a living level. I mean, you know, like basement is, it's just, it's not when you look at assessors records. Basement space is severely discounted. It's, 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 it's utility space. And maybe there's some ancillary entertainment uses or things like that, but, but you can't like, you know, if it's going up five feet, that's not going from one and a half to three stories. That's going from one and a half to maybe one point seven five stories. You know, I mean, I take a look at my house, which, you know, if I had a dormers would be substantially similar. You know, I mean, this is a small house. Let's also put out that this is a twelve hundred square foot house. I believe it's something along those lines, Stephen's about twelve hundred square feet. It's a twelve hundred square foot house. This is not a large project. And I mean, if I had a dormers onto my house, it would be a lot like theirs and it would be a one point seven five story house. You know, so I, I, I just, I don't see under any, in any world where this is now a three-story house. And, and I also don't see how the, this, this, this notion of a wall of houses, that becomes relevant if other people start doing that and we can judge some of these other projects by their merits. We can't make assumptions about what the future may hold. Our purview is limited specifically to this single project and whether this single project is substantially more detrimental. We consider other things on their merits, but we have no such business before us. And we really have to go by what is proposed right here and right now. And compared to the other houses that are within, say, let's say if you have a definition of a neighborhood of a hundred feet, neighborhood has to be at least a hundred feet. There are a number of houses that have done very similar things. So I just, I, I see, I just don't see where this is the place to take a stand on this particular issue. I know this is something you care about deeply, Jeff, and I know that it's because you love that lake. And I know we've talked about it a lot in the past, but, but, but we, this can be fixed. But it has to be through some sort of amendment to the bylaws. This is not the spot to do with.
Okay, let me address that quick. Finished basements. Finished basements. If you go over two houses to your north and visit those neighbors of yours, you'll see a finished basement that's perfectly usable in all respects. If you have a basement like mine in a two-hundred-year-old house, you don't have a finished basement. But if you build a brand-new basement and you engineer it correctly, you can, you can use it as, as living quarters.
Nonetheless, you can't market it easily as living quarters, you know. No, because I mean, if you take a look at assessors, right, the living, the living spaces always are, you know, basements are always discounted. And if you take a look at the MLS, living spaces, if, if something's in the basement, you can't, you don't really count that as square footage unless you put a specific flag on that that says you're including the gross living area and basement.
You absolutely can.
No, you have, yeah, no, but I mean, I've, you, you can do that if you specifically disclose that. And, but that's, I, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but basements for families are generally not living spaces and we've never, ever considered to be a foundation with a roof to be a one-story house.
And our, and, well, first of all, there's nothing, nothing that says a basement can't be a living area.
Our bylaws used to actually explicitly stay there in, in Chutesbury. You can't, you couldn't have basement as living space. It used to say that. I don't know if it says it anymore, but that's what it used to say.
Let's take, I just would like to take the argument to a ridiculous point, maybe, but maybe a point, I don't know. Are there any limitations of how deep you can dig? The bylaws.
Probably not.
No, probably not. So if they wanted to dig down two stories below where they are and create a three and a half story house, that would be within our bylaws. Because they're going below the ground. So I don't understand why if they stay within the limit above the ground, they are now penalized for something that's below the ground.
No, they're not penalized.
Oh, no, in, in, in your argument, in your argument, they are. In your argument, they are because you're counting it as a full story. So I'll take it to its ultimate degree. Suppose you went down two more. They'd be allowed to do that? Or would you call that a four-story house that's not allowed because it's too deep, even though they're not as high as they could be?
I don't think there are any limits on that. There may be building code limits, but I'm not aware of any zoning limits.
And I also want to put out that this is on a grade, right? You know, so that if, 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 can I just clarify with you, Stephen and Megan? That like, th- this is on a grade, right? So the ground sort of slopes down, but, but when you start at the very top of the house, the foundation is not so far from the ground, right? There are not like windows at the front of the house for egress, so you could escape from the basement. You can't use it for a number of different reasons. This is not, you know, this doesn't have, you know, full coverage of windows all around and doors all around. It's, it's just simply not the same type of space and I don't think it's fair to call this a three-story house. It's going up five feet from a one and a half story house to a one point seven five or a two-story house, but I don't think it's fair to call it anything but that.
There, there are houses in Chutesbury, at least one I know of, that is entirely a basement.
But, but our, our purview was Yeah, please, yes.
I mean, we have a four-year-old and a six-year-old. It's just not practical to think that there's gonna be living space that they can walk out to the water. Beyond the other egress matters, I mean, we're not putting a kitchen there. It just
So one of the things from the last meeting was that we were supposed to hear from Rob Ritchie, I believe. That was an action. Do we have any follow-up on that?
Go ahead, Jeff, say it again.
I, I spoke to Bob. I didn't take him by. But I spoke to him about, about the, the legal aspects. This all comes from the zoning act, section six of the zoning act. And it, it talks about findings that are supposed to be made by the permitting authority, in this case it's us, when these types of projects are proposed. You're supposed to make a finding and it, the, the state law apes what we have in our, in our lung. You have to find if not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And we've elected to make that finding through a special permit process. And he confirmed for me that that you do that based on what the neighborhood is. Neighborhoods around a lake like that are going to be very different in, in character and how they're put together, the slope of the, of the land, the amount of trees that are present, the spacing of the houses, how steep they go back, if there's anybody in back of you. Every neighborhood is going to be different and decisions need to be made based on what you find when you get there.
Sixty-seven Shore Drive?
No, I, I didn't bring him to the property. But I just wanted to confirm that making a decision based on the neighborhood over at sixty-seven was not necessarily the same kind of decision that we would be making at twenty-three lake, because the neighborhoods could be
Thirty-two lake.
It's thirty-two, but, so number twenty-eight, which is forty feet, separates us and number twenty-eight got approved for a special permit. Is that not considered the same neighborhood?
It, it, it could be, but it's not this case.
What do you mean it's not this case?
Feet from us.
Our, we're number thirty-two. You're arguing that the other side of the lake, you don't wanna, it isn't related to us at all. So I'm asking you about number twenty-eight, which is forty feet from us, which got not a lot of these permits get approved. Or, I'm sorry, let me rephrase it. Not a lot of permits get applied for around the lake. It seems like one every three years average or so. So this was a few before in twenty-ten and that got approved. So, and that went up to, that's, we're probably asking to go a little less than them for height. So I don't know how that's any different than what we're trying to do.
I wasn't on this board then. And, and, you know, as
But if you're considering our neighborhood, that's forty feet from us. I mean, I don't, I don't, I fail to understand that. Did you ever get to speak with town council and get their opinion on the matter?
Excuse me. Things have happened for many years at the lake and in two thousand and ten, I was not on this board. I was on the planning board. And, you know, something that Herb said was telling that the, the lake has been, according to him, ruined for years. And we just keep, seeming to keep ruining it. Well, I don't buy that and I'm not going along with it. And if my fellow members don't respect my decisions, I, I can't help that. Sorry.
Really hard to say that people are ruining the lake. I'm sorry, I've spent my life at the lake. My grandfather was born at the lake.
No, that, my colleague said that.
May I clarify one comment though, based on sixty-seven Shore Drive, two facts. The sixty-six Lake Drive, the people that complained and that had, took issue, they had recently reconstructed their home to the maximum building height. So they had already taken advantage of this. And secondly, that house benefits from being adjacent to a Lake Waiola Association beach. So when you're looking from that porch, which you, you did recently, I believe, Jeff, it's not, they have an empty lot next to them that's owned by Lake Waiola Association. So it, that's not really a fair thing because you're taking into account a beach that is a private beach. And, and I don't know if you measured their setbacks, but their setbacks from, you know, your view looks substantially greater because they benefit from being adjacent to an unimproved lot.
I mean, they, they were encroaching on their setbacks. We, we, I mean, they weren't, they were, we had, they had to move their property like, they had to buy a wedge of property so they were not further encroaching. I mean, they, they were at their setback.
Just, just to clarify, since my name was brought up, I think you quoted me out of context, Jeff. My context
Of course.
What do you mean, of course?
I quoted what you said. You said that they just keep ruining. You said they just keep ruining.
You interrupted me. You interrupted me making an explanation.
Herb, you're not even a member, for Christ's sake. You're not even supposed to be speaking.
Hold up here, no, that's out of order. Herb, Herb has plenty of reason to be allowed to contribute. He is, you know, I mean,
As long as I have been on the board, in my first year on the board, I was also an alternate member. They wanted to hear from me. I want to hear from alternate members too. That's, that's part of the practice, practice that we've had for twenty-five years here that I've been on this board. So I do want Herb to be allowed to speak uninterrupted.
I don't like being quieted down by an alternate member. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna let you speak as much as you want, Jeff. Herb, can you finish your thoughts? Are you there? I don't even think he's there anymore. Or whatever you want? I think he left. Jeff, let me just say something about the comments from Bob Ritchie and then I have an idea. Bob Ritchie talked about the neighborhood and you didn't bring him to the neighborhood. But I have a photograph of the neighborhood right here. This photograph of the neighborhood has five other houses that are two stories right now that are right on the lake. Now, when you use the word substantial detriment, it has to be, the law defines substantial, considerable, a lot. That's what it has to be. The, the, the law all over the place in Black's Law Dictionary, in the case law, they use the word substantial. It can't be minimal. In this case, the abutists who are complaining across the street do lose some view. But if you look at it, all the views they have, and I, we have in evidence, all the views they have, it's minimal compared to what they continue to have directly across the street. They have needed easements. The gentleman, Mr. Holmes, can sit on his front lawn and look straight out with an unencumbered view. You can look at, to the right side, unencumbered, straight on, unencumbered. Even somewhat to the left, unencumbered. Only when he goes to the far left, does he lose some of that beach view. I don't think it's substantial. I don't think a court of law would find it as substantial. When you look at all of these houses in that immediate neighborhood, right there, in close proximity, not across the lake, when you look at that, you have five houses that are second stories. You might as well have a bylaw that says if you're lakefront and someone's view, no matter how minimal, is impacted, then you can't build. That's what the bylaw should say. But it doesn't say that. I do think this is legislating. I do think in relationship to the bylaws as written, not as we might want them to be, but as written, I do believe it is highly probable that a court of law would find this as arbitrary and capricious and maybe even worse as a regulatory taking. You yourself said you want to encourage them to do what they want to do. And I don't know how they can build what they want to build without having five more feet. You don't even want to give them any more feet, it sounds to me. You want them to live in the basement, which I know historically, this town has frowned on basement livings. We, we used to have an explicit bylaw against it. I don't know if we still have it. But I know it was in the old bylaws, because when I built my first house in Chutesbury, when I had no money, I wanted to live in the basement and they would not allow me to live in the basement. That was nineteen eighty-two and nineteen eighty-three. You can't live in the basement. You have to have a structure above the basement. A basement is commonly used for storage, for mechanical rooms. And, and that's gonna, they're gonna be deprived of all of those opportunities. I don't know how they can, you, you yourself said they were gonna be able to still get what they wanted here, but, but within twenty-one and a half feet. Unless you're willing to give them some more feet, I don't know. Go ahead, Jeff.
All right.
Do you want to talk?
Yeah, you're damn right I want to talk. Are you ready for me to talk?
Yes, I want you to talk, but I want, I want town council to weigh in on this.
Okay, okay. I'm looking at the same picture you are. I'm not looking at you guys. I have this picture up. First of all, to say that if you have four or five houses that have gone up in large proportions to second stories on the shore of the lake, that somehow this pattern must be continued all around the lake. That's almost what you're saying. I, I, I don't agree with that.
I'm just saying in the neighborhood. I mean, responding to your comments, in this neighborhood.
All right, well, you, you can look at, at these houses here. What I see here almost looks like a row of apartments on largely defoliated lots. I don't see a lot of, I'm using my cursor here, probably nobody can see it. I'm, I'm not seeing a lot of houses right behind that, that would be profoundly affected. And, and that's, if you go to the, to the south, immediately to the south, you could almost construe that as a different neighborhood. You start seeing trees. You start seeing smaller structures. Lots of foliage, smaller structures. And, and I can see the house with the arrow. That's the one we're talking about. That could be construed to be in a different neighborhood, a different setting, a different ambiance. This, this picture, when I, when I saw it, didn't, it was no sale for me, showing this picture. I mean, this is just like what Herb was saying. We've been ruining it for a while. And to me, when, when a board gets off-base in its decisions, it can change course at any time. It, it, we're not bound by decisions that we've made in the past that are not in the public interest. We can change course at any time and, and boards do it all the time.
So, if I just want to clarify again, if I can try to do So uh, if I just want to clarify again, if I can try to do that. Without being interrupted, and I know I'm just an alternate. But I do have something to say. Uh, you did take me out of context because what I was saying was, and maybe you didn't take down the whole quote. My personal feelings about what's going on around the lake, which I expressed as perhaps ruining or overbuilding. To me have no bearing on this case tonight, whether or not I feel that too much has been done on that lake. As no bearing. So that was the context in which I said ruin. I can say whatever I want about ruined, destroyed, defoliated, deforested. It's what's happening now, what's before us right now. And, you know, I might think that too much has been done in the past. I might think that too much will be done in the future. But that's not how we judge things, on feelings and thoughts. There are some regulations, and that's all I meant by that statement.
Anyway, I I I would like to not vote on this because I do want an attorney independent. To weigh in, and I think town council, I mean, you say she may have a conflict of interest. If she decides she does, she does. And if she, but only she can make that decision. If she has a conflict of interest, because I understand she lives right there somewhere there. I don't know where exactly she lives, but.
Down the road.
Yeah, well, if she has a conflict of interest, I I think she would be the first to say that she does. And um, and she would uh authorize the town to have another lawyer look at this, but I really believe. That we are in danger of having a finding against us. And and if I think if the court finds that it's arbitrary and capricious, which I think they. Very well may, I think we can get hit with attorney's fees as well. And I and I just, I don't want, as a chair of this board. I don't want to take that risk. I would like to have a lawyer look at this. Independently, our town council or someone that she chooses or the select people choose. Um, as as someone who could take her place if she's not able to render a decision. I believe. That this could be construed as arbitrary and capricious. I don't believe a reasonable person in this situation. Could find that there's a more substantial detriment to the community than the other uh. Structure that's presently there. I don't see that that's uh possible from a factual, from an evidentiary viewpoint. The law talk, when you use the word substantial, the law defines substantial everywhere, case law, statutory law, Black's Law Dictionary. And I don't think that we are even close to that kind of a detriment. You know, just because, so they should be deprived of having uh. Their family to use their premises. And 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 in a normal house, just because someone's views across the street are somewhat affected. Somewhat affected, not substantially, but somewhat affected. It's like they have the right across the street. In fact, you even said it, Jeff, in the last hearing. You'd be more inclined to allow people across the street to build up. But not on the lake. So what you're saying, then, if you're on the lake, you can only have at best. Even though the law allows for twenty eight feet. In this situation, even though they've complied with everything, even the most stringent requirements, that they can only have twenty one and a half feet. I I I just, I I don't think it's fundamentally uh fair. It's not substantial. I think it's arbitrary and capricious. And I think the court could so fine, so I really would like, if the lawyer says no, I don't think a lawyer is gonna do that. I don't think the courts are gonna do that. Um, I think you're wrong, Mr. Chair. Okay. But I at least want to blame it on someone else. Good, go ahead, Jeff.
I I I would love my objections to having Donna McNichol be the the person.
Well, we can at least ask her.
Her code of ethics would prevent her from doing this if 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 she was indeed, you know, if.
She has a one-story cottage down the street here.
She's in a different neighborhood.
She can recuse if she wants, you know, I mean, I don't think.
I'm just saying, for the record, I do not believe that Donna is the correct lawyer for this.
Well, I'm not saying she is, but she can recuse herself. Only, look at, we, where I live right here on the other uh Chutesbury, we've had projects right around here. I and I was an abbot. I just recused myself from those cases. I came to the hearing. I was, I did not act as chair. I didn't vote. I didn't even participate. I recused myself. Donna McNichol has the. Privilege or the right to recuse herself. And if she recuses herself. Then we can get another lawyer in. She can recommend a lawyer or the town can recommend a lawyer, but I think we need to have someone looking at this. From a liability perspective, and and that's my.
I mean, I just.
She's gonna advise us on our discretion.
She did.
Myself. She can say, I recuse myself. This is a conflict of interest for me, and I don't want to be involved in this case. But I will help you, Mr. Chairman, and and the ZBA. I will help you get another lawyer appropriately. And I know she does that. She is, in fact, she has asked me many times in the last twenty five years. To recommend other lawyers who have their expertise in these matters, because she had to recuse herself. She couldn't weigh in on a whole host of cases. She asked my thoughts. Okay, so she could do that. She she's not gonna, lawyers are not gonna participate. They can be disbarred and disciplined. They're not gonna participate if they think they have a real conflict of interest. The fact that she has a one-story house on the lake somewhere close in close proximity. Doesn't mean that there's there's an inherent conflict of interest. It may be. I don't know. Only she can assess that. Only she can just, you know, decide that in her own head. She might say, yeah, this is a conflict of interest. I shouldn't participate, no problem. It doesn't mean we should be deprived. Of uh an attorney independently looking at this. You're gonna have Bob Ritchie go to the neighborhood. He didn't even go to the neighborhood. You know, so um. I I I'm just uncomfortable voting on this because I I understand it has to be. Three of us have to agree, and you already pretty much expressed your viewpoint in this, and you can block it. I don't want to call a vote at this point in time until we have a a lawyer looking at this. I don't think it's a close call. I really don't. I think your legislating, I really believe that. I believe you are legislating. If this was a planning board meeting. I think everything you're saying would be well taken and we can all. Develop a bylaw around that, propose it to the town meeting, pass it by the town.
Chuck, you're not gonna browbeat me, so you better quit.
I'm not gonna do that. I'm not trying to. I just want to have an.
Trying to do. You're trying to bully and browbeat. It's not gonna work.
No, I'm not. I just want another lawyer to look at it, Jeff.
Yeah, if 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 you want a legal opinion, um, it it. I I think you you ought to get um a Realtor or a landscape architect or. Someone who's familiar with site planning, property values, how. Um, uh, you know, the aspects of neighborhoods that make them desirable or not desirable, what would be detrimental or not. Um, you know, there are probably Realtors that would give us better advice than a lawyer.
Oh, I don't think so, because this comes down to whether we're going to be sued or not, and whether we're going to lose and whether the town is gonna have to pay attorney's fees.
They can bring in action. I want to know from a lawyer. If a lawyer tells me. There's only a one percent chance that they're gonna win. Okay, that's one thing. But if they say there's a ninety nine percent chance they're gonna win, that's something else. So and if a lawyer, if a lawyer who's learned in municipal law, in municipal liability. Including land use law and the the decisions of the land court and the decisions of the Superior Court and the decisions of the federal court concerning these matters. I don't see what the problem is of them weighing in. I don't understand what the problem is. If Donna can't, if Donna. It has a conflict of interest, she will state it. If she has a conflict of interest, we get another lawyer to weigh in. I know we'll have to pay for it, but I'd rather pay for a few hours of a lawyer's time, having them come to a me- our next meeting. And and to discuss this with us than than a a possibility that we're. We're gonna get sued, where in my opinion, a a high probability that we'll lose. And I have a right to make that opinion, too. I've been doing this. For forty two years as an attorney who has expertise in suing towns.
Yeah, nice work, nice work, Mr. Chairman. The applicants are sitting right down over here.
Well, I don't care. I'm gonna tell you how I see it. I'm telling you how I see it. I'm telling you how I see it.
That's irresponsible. You shouldn't be talking like this in a meeting. What's the matter with you?
I'm co- I think this is arbitrary and capricious. That's what I believe. You want to deny them the right to use their property.
Chuck, you you are you are off the rails irresponsible right now in what you're saying.
I want another lawyer to look at this, Jeff. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, Chuck, Chuck, how would we make that happen? Would this be a motion where we you'd propose a motion and we'd second it?
I I I have to call a vote. I'm not gonna call a vote until I have an opportunity to do that. Unless, unless, yeah, I'm not, I I I'm the chair, and I can I can decide whether to call a vote or not. I don't intend to call a vote. I want a lawyer. Independently to look at this. To me, this is dangerous. I've never felt in my twenty five years on this board. I have never felt so close to having a case brought against us. We have no, I have one case against us in my twenty five years serving on this board. I want another lawyer. They say, Chuck, you're wrong. There's a one percent chance they'll win. Okay, then we'll just call a vote and and you you and and you'll start.
Chair, to clarify, I believe Andy Berg was saying that he wondered, was asking what the next steps would be in order to get a lawyer involved.
Continue this meeting, and we can continue it, and and I'm gonna look at this. On on our next scheduled meeting, which I believe is December the twenty first, but in the meantime, I would like to uh uh in the next couple of days. Call Donna McNichol, explain the situation to her, and I'm gonna and 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 see if she wants to recuse herself. And I'll and I'll and I'll express the view that you have, Jeff. That that perhaps she should recuse herself and I'll give her the reasons that you stated. If you want, I can wait till the minutes are are done before that and just show her the minutes. Um, I have no problem with that. Uh, but if she's recuses herself, then I want her to assist. Me as the chair of this board to get another lawyer in here and to attend one of our meetings. It's not unusual, as you know, for a town council to attend zoning meetings or planning board meetings or this meeting or that meeting. They do it all the time. Um, and 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 that's that's what I think we need to do. I need, someone needs to look at this independently. We have a fundamental disagreement. About the evidence here. I don't think it's a substantial detriment. I don't think it could be, I don't even think it's close. You know, and you're depriving them of what they want to do with their property. You want them to live in a basement, is what you're saying.
Tucker, we have that done.
Yeah, well.
Are you just gonna keep doing this?
Are you okay with, do you have any objection?
I'm I'm not okay with the way you're going. You're browbeating me.
I'm not trying to do anything. I just want to have a lawyer look at this, Jeff, okay?
Or we can, we can set, um, I have a paperwork I can share to continue the meeting if we decide on the date. I have my calendar next to me.
I I.
Chuck, may I ask?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I may just clarify a question, Chuck. If 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 we meet with Donna McNichol, would it be possible to invite her to the next one of these, just so that that um? That that she could be here and 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 she could be part of our um our overall discussion of this, because I think it could be useful to have her actually here in person.
I think that's a good idea, and if and and I think that she can come to the conclusion or not to. Uh, to recuse herself or not, but if she does, we get another lawyer. That's that's all I'm asking, Jeff. I know, I don't want to have a vote here. I'm 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 uncomfortable with the vote. You've already said how you're gonna vote in this. And 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 that's gonna start a whole process. And and I don't want that process.
That's what people do in the deliberatory phase is they, you know, they often state what they're thinking.
Well, the at the last meeting, Jeff, I I I expressed the viewpoint at the last meeting. That we should consult with town council or if she is not appropriate to consult with because of a conflict of interest. Then we would consult another attorney. That's all I said, and that's still where my position is. I want another lawyer to come in here, whether it's Donna McNichol or some other lawyer, to come in here and 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 tell me I'm wrong. That's fine.
At this point, we we can share the paperwork and set up a continuation.
Well, I have to only ask both Steve and Megan if they have any objection to that. Will you can, will you uh agree to continue the hearing? It's either that or vote, so.
Yeah, that's fine, but is is there gonna be some headway in the meantime, since we have to wait another month, you know? Or is it that Donna then appears on the next meeting and then she opines or recuses, and then we have to wait another month? Like, what's the?
Yeah, I think that's, unless you want to call a vote. I mean, I mean, unless, if you don't want to do that, because we need your consent. If you don't want to do that, um, we have to, we have to vote right now, and I think we know how the votes can be weighed up.
No, that's fine. Well, I'll wait for town council.
Are 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 we still in a hearing? I I I thought we, I thought we dispatched the hearing and moved into deliberatory phase.
No, we're in, we're in, we're in a deliberatory phase right now.
So there's no more hearing?
No, well, we have to deliberate.
Right, so so they don't have to give us extensions because now we have ninety days to deliberate.
Ninety days from when? From tonight? Okay, all right.
Starts tonight.
Well, they could, they could give us more of those. They could give us an extension and that keep continues the ninety days, so.
Oh.
Let's continue and have Donna.
Same, we don't have to.
Uh, because we're not involved. Got it. Thank you for clarifying, Jeff. That was my mistake.
We we can all just continue coming back. We're still within the ninety days. Obviously, December twenty first is the next meeting. We have another hearing on that day. You'll be, you won't be first, you'll be second on the agenda. We have another special permit hearing on that day. Um. And then we'll see if Donna can make that meeting or she, I'll have a brief discussion with her. Or or we can give her all the minutes. If she she might recuse herself, I don't want to even come to the meeting. I'm recusing myself. And I'll just ask her to help me get another lawyer.
Jeff, just to clarify, is there any paperwork that needs to happen for this to be on the next agenda as well?
No.
Okay.
No, because we're within the ninety days. We just saying the ninety day starts from tonight, today.
So we, we're free to operate. Um, as long as we wish, within the ninety days. If the ninety has to be extended, then we'd need to get. Agreement from the applicant in, we'd have to use those forms again, but we're, you know, we have three months.
Okay, thank you for the.
We have ninety days from today, which brings us, I think, uh. Janu- uh, December, January and February, so February. Teen somewhere. Okay. All right, so we're we're done with this for tonight. I am gonna, uh, in the next few days, actually, Tessa, how fast can you get those minutes to us?
I will make it more of a pri- I will make it a priority. The Zoom is recorded, by the way. The Zoom is recorded, too.
Okay, well, I mean, I would like to give her all the minutes of all the meetings and the application and all the photos and the decisions, have a conversation. I'm gonna say to her that uh, if it's okay with you, Jeff, I'm gonna say that you think that she probably should recuse herself, and she might just do that. She might say, yes, I'm gonna recuse myself. And then I'm gonna ask her to, uh, if she does do that. She might not want to do it right then. She might want to come and listen to what we have to say. Um. If she does do that, uh, we'll get another lawyer in here to look at this. Okay? A lawyer that's an expert on municipal liability. All right, okay, let's go to this next uh agenda item. Uh, is there someone here for education and guidance? I think someone was gonna come. Is that person here? Is that you?
That's me, sorry, I was muted.
Okay, Mr. Levine.
Yep, thank you very much. I.
Tell us how you want to be educated.
Yeah, I'm sorry to take your time uh 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 this evening, but I will. Um, I live at six, three, three Wendell Road. Um, and I'm contemplating the purchase of a property at five eighty five. I sent to you, Mr. Demaree, um. Copies from the deed of the map, the the survey map and the text that accompanied it.
Um. Tell us what you want to do. What do you want to do?
So I want to um to ascertain whether it's a conforming lot. Because I clearly don't want to need a special permit.
Okay. All right, tell us, how big is the lot?
The lot is six and three quarter acres. It has. It has two hundred and ninety six feet of frontage.
I'm saying, what did you, two hundred and ninety six feet?
Of frontage on Wendell Road. Fifty one feet of that is a right of way. From the previous owner for logging. But I don't know. But I don't know if that affects the frontage or not. Um, that, that's in perpetuity, the way it's written in the deed. It has a setback of, there's an existing building of 478 foot square foot, square foot building that is set back 170 feet from the road. The side setbacks are both. More than an acre, you know, they're, they're a tremendous amount of land on the sides. Um, and as far as I could ascertain by, because I couldn't find all the pins. But it looked like the rear setback is greater than 300 feet. So my question is, if, in your opinion, if you think this is a conforming lot?
Jeff, do you have an opinion on this? This is, even if you back out the 50 acre, if the 50 feet, you're still more than 250. No, you're not.
No, you're 246. 245, it's 51 feet is the, is the right of way. Yes.
And what is the right of way? Can you, you know what it is?
Yeah, so.
Who gets the benefit of that?
So the, this piece of land was carved out of a 300 plus acre parcel. And it's completely surrounded by, still by that 300 acres. Um, and they were actively logging that large parcel. So they wanted to retain access to it with a logging road that, that, um, is the 51 acre right, the 51 foot right of way.
Jeff, do you have an opinion in this?
Just the right of way, you own it. The house is there, the house is there already?
Yes.
So you're trying to determine whether by virtue of a lack of frontage, you have a non-conforming house?
Yeah, um, yes.
Okay. Oh, that's a good question. I, I can look that up in, um. The legal books that I have and probably give you an answer.
Want to do that? Uh, you can, you can take Jeff's contact information, unless you want to wait until December 21st. Or you can make an appointment with the planning board that Jeff is on. And, because they have jurisdiction over this too.
What works best?
Well, the fastest way is just to get Jeff's phone number and call him and see what he says.
Sure.
Um, okay, that's probably the fastest way. And if you, and if, if you can't get that resolved in a week or so. All right, you can come back to us on the 21st or perhaps as a planning board meeting before that.
No, I would much prefer to move ahead, um, and. Um, because I would like to get it perked. And see about installing. It has no, um, it has no, um, running water or electricity, this house. So, so I would like to modernize it. But I, I want to know that it's a conforming lot.
Cause you don't want a special permit. After what you just witnessed. All right, so, so Jeff, can you give?
My, my gut is that you're okay.
Cool.
That's my gut. I just read the definition of frontage in the, in the zoning bylaw. Yeah, I, I, I feel, I feel that you do.
Yeah, I read it too. I didn't see anything about right of way.
Yep. And it, it, it has nothing to do with your, with your access or the ability to access it. That right of way is not. That right of way is not your access, right? You go into.
No, it, it has a driveway.
Right, so you don't need the right of way area for your access.
No.
Um, I, I should probably look it up. There's gotta be other cases like that. And, um, I could find the answer for you.
Great. Can I take your number and I'll, or I could give you my email or whatever works best for you.
Um, I, I do best when I'm, when I'm nagged.
All right. All right, I'll call you. What's your number?
413.
Yep.
253. 0705.
0705. So can I just ask an opinion if? If there were a, one, this is just the last thing and very quickly, um, if there were a competitive bid for this piece of property. And it was known that that bidder's intention was not to put in any improvements. But to try and, there, there isn't even an outhouse here, so I don't know how they would dispose of human waste. But if their intention was not to bring electricity or, or, um, or. Make a septic field and a well and drill a well, would that be allowed? If they lived there?
If, if, if they wanted to drill a well or put in a septic field?
Not have any of that. So the previous owner, I'm sure you all are aware of her. She lived there since 1975. With no electricity or running water.
Oh, I know the property, yep.
Right, so the, so another, a competitive bidder for this property. States that they want to live there exactly under the same terms. No electricity, no running water, no sewage. Nothing.
No, because when, when the property is transferred. And maybe it has something to do with whether it's a bank transfer or not. But I know if you do it through a bank and you try to get a mortgage. There, one of the requirements is going to be a, an inspection of the, um, the septic facilities, the septic system. And if they find one, none, they're gonna require one.
Right.
Or if they find a cesspool, they're gonna require a Title V system. Um, but if, if, if it does not involve the bank and there's no mortgage. It might be different. You might be able to do what you suggested.
Wow. All right, well, we'll leave that for another time, but I will call you. Thanks very much.
Okay.
You want to come back on this agenda on the 21st, let me know.
I will.
You might get, you might get a planning board meeting before that too, but I think Jeff would be perfect for this.
Cool, thanks.
Okay.
All right.
All right, moving on, new business. Um, is our next agenda item and, um. I, I, I think that this hearing and the last couple of hearings certainly show me that. The zoning board and the planning board should get together and talk about. Legislation, uh, that, uh, might be more appropriate. So that we don't have to go through this kind of a hearing ever again. So as your liaison, Jeff, I'll ask you to set something up. And I don't know, maybe we have to wait until the pandemic is over, which hopefully will be. In a few, in, in another six months or so when we all have vaccines. I don't know, but. But I, I'll put it to you as a liaison between the planning board and the zoning board. To set something up. Uh, perhaps to write regulations. That might be, uh, uh, more in line with, uh, certainly how you've been thinking about it tonight and. And other concerns that were expressed tonight as well. Is, are you comfortable with that, Jeff?
I actually spoke with Deacon about.
Okay.
I think that would be great. I think that would be a really good thing.
We'll do that and you just figure out the timing. If, if, if we're gonna take walks together, though, we might want to wait another six months, but. Um, otherwise we could do it by our own individual walks. Like we have been doing our individual inspections, but if we want to get together as two boards and start walking around the lake and looking at things and. And rewriting, uh, bylaws, again, I'm up for that. I have no problem with that. Okay? Um, old business, uh, remember the applications, uh, fees.
To raise.
January 1st, it goes to $400. And the site plan review fees increased to $200, so, uh, special permits and variances to 400. And, uh, site plan reviews to $200. Um, I'm gonna schedule a meeting. I already told you, December 21st, we're all available. So in the next couple of days, I already wrote the notice of public hearing. I think I've mailed that to all of you. You all must, must have a copy of that, but I'm gonna send that in the next couple of days. And certainly by the end of the week to the Hampshire Gazette for appropriate publication, uh, for the special permit. On the prefab, uh, garage. Okay, um. Anything else?
May I just clarify, Chuck? Um, it's December 1st for, for, December 21st for, for the effective day for the fee increase.
No, no, no.
Oh, December 1st. January 1st, okay, thank you. I'm just going to, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna put on our website. I'm gonna put the what's effective right now, and I'm also gonna put just that same chart. Down one that says like effective January 1st, just so the people know it's coming up if they want to, uh, get something in.
Exactly, exactly.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, um, anything else? Anything else on new business or old business?
Just for my own education. Uh, the last gentleman. When he was asking about non-conforming and he was talking about frontage. That table that we have on page eight of the bylaws that still applies, right? That 250 foot frontage, cause he would be considered. RR in the RR district, right? Cause he's off the road or is he considered? Or is conservation?
What'd he say, Cooley? What road did he say? I forgot what road he said.
Wendell Road.
Wendell Road.
Wendell Road.
Yeah, so that's probably, I would say that that's, um, RR, no?
Well, all the frontages in RR, because that's right at the road, but then the lots go back into the woods.
So it might be FC. It might be FC, but e- e- either way, it's all 250. Right?
Yeah.
And he said, how much frontage did he have?
291.
Yeah. So that mean, that would mean that, like you say, he, he wouldn't have to necessarily apply for a special permit.
Yeah, I would think it would just be like he would just get a building permit to then just go ahead. I, I think his concern was, you know, that there's that 50 foot encumbered right of way, but it seems to me as if he owns that, but it's encumbered. But, but he still owns it, you know? But I think that, yeah, that was what Jeff was gonna, uh, yeah.
I just want to, just want to get. The right frame of mind here in terms of what this means, and I'm still learning.
Yeah, I, I mean, if the 50 foot doesn't count, then he's, he does, he does, he is on a non-conforming lot. Um. And I, I'd have to go through these.
He's on a non-conforming lot, if what?
If, if. If the 50 feet does not count towards his 250.
Yeah.
Then he has, he has less.
Right.
In terms of frontage, this lot is non-conforming. So then, then you have to, you know. You have to go through all this stuff in the zoning bylaw and, and see where he fits in terms of what he, what he wants to do.
Right.
And whether by right or by special permit.
Right.
For the minutes, what part is the, in the bylaws, as it states the 250 frontage requirement?
Page eight would be one place.
Page what?
Page eight, the dimensional table.
4.2.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry to have one more question about this, this fee increase. Um, one thing I realized that we didn't, I don't think have in last motion was an appeal from a building commissioner's determination. Um, that was set at 300, but I don't know that we officially approved that to go to 400.
Okay, all right, um, I don't know where Jeff went, but I. But we could, we, you're right, what we had is for special permits and variances and site plan reviews. You are correct, Andy. It was not on the agenda, so my suggestion is. We discuss it right now, put it on the agenda for the 21st. And then we can vote on it on the 21st. And then we could put it in effect the same day, January 1st. Or February 1st, if we are so inclined. Jeff, I, I don't know if you missed that, but Andy raised an issue that. And there's another function that the zoning board of appeals plays, and that's an appeal from the building inspector. And, and, and that fee is presently 300 dollars. Yeah, I meant to include everything, so. But what I meant is again irrelevant, because I didn't say it and it wasn't in the minutes and it wasn't discussed. So I think that, um, I, I'm, I'm fine in, uh, discussing it right now, putting on an agenda for the vote on December. 21st, if you are all right with that, Jeff, and you are all right with that as well. That make a sense? Does that make sense? Okay.
Could you say that one more time in like one sentence, what that change would be?
Right now, Tessa, um, we, we have multiple functions. One of our functions is variance. One of our functions is a special permit. One of our functions is a site plan review. We have previously discussed those fees, those application fees and voted on those. To be in effect on January 1st, 2021. What we did not discuss, Andy has raised it tonight. So we're discussing it tonight for the first time, is the other function we have that we don't exercise much, but we have. Probably three or four times in my 25 years. Is when the building inspector makes a determination and someone appeals. That determination, they come to us and that fee has been $300.
Thank you.
We have not discussed raising that fee to $400. Um. You know, again, are we all okay with raising that to $400? Is it, when you do that, let me ask, I, I just don't remember. When there's a hearing on an appeal. From, uh, granting or denying a permit issued by the, or an enforcement action issued by the building inspector. Is that a public hearing? That we have to publish? Does anybody know? I just.
I know.
I, I have to defer to Jeff on that.
We do them so rarely. I think we've done one since I've been on this board.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, you know, three or four times in my, in the 25 years that I've been on it. It might be somewhere in there, but for some reason we had that at $300.
You know. If it, if it isn't in here, it's governed by 40A somewhere. Ooh. Look. I just happened to have my copy of 40A right here.
Great, we'll see if you can find something there. There's enforcement.
Section 15.
Or section 10. Section 10.
Appeals to permit granting authority. Uh, what's 10?
10 has to do with enforcement, administration enforcement, so I'm gonna look at page 68. It says the building inspector, um, 10.1 dash 1, the building inspector shall refer applications as appropriate. To the zoning board of appeals, planning board, conservation commission, board of health or any other agency, let me see. The building inspector shall be in section 10.2, shall be responsible for enforcing this bylaw. And shall act on request for enforcement as provided in Metronos, chapter 48, section 7.
Okay. I, I think I got it.
Okay.
This is in, uh, 4815, appeals to permit granting authority. Uh, any appeal under section 8 to a permit? Hold on, uh, no, 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 I, I might have it. Appeals to permit granting authority. Hmm, all right, now maybe I got the wrong thing.
A general question, the 40A that's online. Is that what you're looking at, Jeff? You know, there's an online version of 40A?
Yeah, no, no, I. Yeah, no, no, I, I've got a hard copy here.
But I mean, is that the same thing? Is it, does the online version is the same as that book?
I- i- if it's up to date, if you're looking at an up to date version, yes.
The, the, the book is dated, but I, I know where all the changes have been in, in forty-eight.
I, I think, was it chapter, was it fif-, section fifteen was about an appeal from section eight, which was like the, I think the building, um, inspectors, um, yeah.
Yeah, well, i- if that's correct, if fifteen is the one, it said the board of appeals shall hold a hearing on any appeal, application or petition within sixty-five days.
And it's, it says it's a public hearing, um.
So it says it in forty-eight?
Forty-eight, chapter fifteen, I mean, forty-eight, section fifteen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so apparently there is a hearing.
Okay, so if there's a public hearing, then I have to put it in the newspaper, so it seems that it does make sense to raise the fee.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, let's do that. Let, let's, um, are we all in agreement that we want to do that and then we'll just vote on it on the twenty-first? Does, does the people all agree on that?
Yeah, it has to go in the paper, right?
I'm sorry, what?
You're saying it has to go in the paper if it's a hearing?
Yeah, if it's a public.
It's gonna cost, that's gonna cost more.
That's correct. So, you know, again, at least while we're under the pan, the reason the fees are increasing is because of the pandemic, but they were increasing anyway. They were increasing. We were definitely spending twenty-five to fifty bucks, you know, and so I, I, I see that the four hundred, even after the pandemic, a year or two after the pandemic, is probably gonna be just bright. And as Jeff pointed out, we do have other administrative costs that we can certainly justify, for example, paying Tessa. Right? Um, so if we have to have something in the newspaper, or, you know, you know, they charge, I tried to make this particular special permit even tighter. I took, I made, you know, maybe it'd be a little less of a fee, we'll see. So I'm comfortable with going to four hundred, treating it as a special permit, treating it as a variance. Is everybody comfortable with that? Because we're supposed to discuss it and then table it.
I, I like that idea. I mean, I think it makes it consistent and, you know, we're paying the money probably anyway, and, you know, I like it.
Okay, all right, Jeff, are you okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, so considering that we've discussed it, uh, Tessa and the minister should write that we discussed raising the fee for, for any and all appeals, uh, uh, from, uh, a determination or an enforcement action, uh, of the building inspector. And we're gonna, and it's our intention to vote on this at the next meeting and to raise it to four hundred dollars. Okay?
And I think in that case, what I might do is I might hold off on updating the website, just so there's, you know,
Okay.
Just, because I, I don't want to, yeah, I think that's, I'll, I'll wait to do that, and then on the twenty-first, we'll update it so that it will show that the January first rates.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay, um, sorry that this is so contentious this evening. But we will, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at this point in time.
Motion to adjourn.
Again? Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
How's that happen? Tessa, if you can get those minutes to me within a week, it would be appreciated if you can do it. If not, just let me know.
Yeah, I will prioritize.
I want to get, I want to get a whole package together for Donna, all right? The whole thing.
Yeah.
Of all of the minutes, all of the photos, all of the letters. Okay?
I will prioritize it.
All right, thanks so much.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night, valued colleague. I'll see you soon. Good night, everyone.
Sorry we're so contentious, everybody.
Hey, you know, that's what life's about. Yeah. Improvise.
We haven't had many of these.
I, I will bring the, I will bring the bar stool for next time, so we can.
Meetings like this are why they invented sleeping pills.
That's right.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone. See you.